I would like to call this regular school board meeting on Thursday, November 20th, 2015, to order. We'll start at the O.S.E., with the pleasure of looking. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to open the floor for any public comments related to agenda items at 5:16. Seeing no movement, we'll also close the floor's comments at 5:16. Public correspondence, did any members of the board receive any public correspondence?
I would like to mention that Patty, Andy, and myself received community correspondence raising concern about the staffing level in our music department, and so we did respond to that.
Were there concerns that was too many or too few?
Just wanted to make sure it was adequately staffed for the programs that we wanted.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Next up is board comments and committee update.
So, the Health Benefits Committee met twice and actually wrapped up our work for the year, and will be receiving a document tonight from Superintendent Allen for the proposal.
Kathy Todd and I met a final time with the parent educator union, and we reached agreements on most of our issues, with the exception of health insurance, which we will talk about more.
Not a committee comment, just a board update. The reason that Lonnie has graciously agreed to run the meeting tonight is because my voice sounds like I've been garnered in gravel, so I decided I'd spare everyone that.
Todd and I went to the SST meetings, the whole school technology meeting on Monday, and there's 633 students enrolled, enrolled, 45 of them Newmarket. They discussed certain things in the agenda of enrollment. A very impressive young lady spoke about her construction trade, and how she is building a leader of a team building sheds, which you can buy at a low cost, I guess, or no, but reduced price, I don't know. And then they talked about the budget and electrical job openings. And then, interestingly, we ended it with, and we'll hear more about that from Superintendent Allen, about the 26, 27 calendars that may have to do, may have to, if the law passes, to start school after Labor Day. There's up to make contingency plans for that. And then, if there's no other committee reports, I have attended two meetings this month with the Fair Funding Project, and two big things are coming out of it. Number one is collecting historical data for special ed costs, and there's a whole, Michaela has a whole, Michaela Demeter from Dover, who was the data collector here, or the, she's the, pretty much, that's a little too early, so it might be mid-spring in order to get it. And then, the second thing is that they have secured, sit in and be able to bring information back, but it is a Friday afternoon, and it might be the weekend of my girls' overnight, Christmas overnight, so, there are things. But anyway, what they want to do is just focus on stories around education in our districts, open enrollment legislation, protecting local control, and special education funding. And they're trying to get together a agenda that's casual, unchallenged, so I think that's pretty exciting, since that usually doesn't happen with non-lawyers, I guess, from what they say. Oh, and the intent is to have some scheduled periodically. So, those are my reports.
To three, for the student effort.
There was Senior A.J. Mulligan, Senior Kai Adalverstein, and Senior Maury Moore. And then for cross-country, there was sophomore Benjamin Patrick and Senior MacMillan Redman. Some recent events, we had the teacher luncheon, which was extremely successful. We raised about $500 per each family that was affected by the fire, so I think that's incredible, and something that was really great that we did. The improv show was last Friday. I was unable to attend, but I heard that it was really funny and was really good. Interact Club on Monday had cookie baking, where we baked a bunch of cookies, and we donated them to the Meals on Wheels, which they really appreciated that, and that was a lot of fun. And then, there's not a ton of upcoming things, because with Thanksgiving break rapidly approaching, it's just starting to wind down. But I do have Senior Amaya Beckles and Emma Forten to talk about some initiatives.
Hi, I'm Amaya Beckles. I'm president of the senior class and also president of SALT. So, we're talking about the senior class in SALT, and then Emma's going to talk about the proposal, but I'll start us off. The senior class, there's not a lot going on right now. The biggest thing probably is their craft fair that's coming up on December 6th, which is a Saturday. It's going to be from 9:00 to 1:00 here at the school. I think we have a good amount of vendors signed up, and we have a good amount of volunteers sign up from our grade. I think we're just looking for a couple more people for, like, hot chocolate donations and, like, selling baked goods for the bake sale, but other than that, I think a lot of us are just busy with college stuff and future plans, so not too much going on, except the craft fair. But for SALT, we actually went to a leadership conference last Friday at Pembroke. We were invited by the Athletic Directors Association. I think some, a couple of SALT members came to talk to you guys about that weeks before, but we got a lot of great feedback from our presentation. The guy that runs it said this to Mr. Hayes, "Jamie, your team was phenomenal. They were poised, prepared, and eloquent. They are an exemplary group. I posted a bunch of things on the NHIAA Twitter and Instagram account, but I'm attaching pictures here. Send a thank you to your team from all of us, and we certainly appreciate your leadership." So, that was really great to hear. We presented it three times to a couple of different groups, and we also listened to a guest speaker, but we got a lot of great feedback, and so I'm definitely proud of our group for that. Other than that, we have been going to the Pines once a month to play bingo with them, which has been a lot of fun. We're going next Tuesday to do that again. And this Sunday, we're going to repaint the mule stable that was in the gym that got painted over the summer, like where the student section is in the gym, so we're gonna, we have a new design that we kind of brainstormed before we left for school, and Kayden Doucette actually, like, sketched it out to make it more official, so we're gonna project it up on to the wall, and we had the paint and stuff, so we're all gonna do that together. So, yeah, that's really it for the senior class in SALT. And then Forten's gonna talk about some student councils, though.
Hi, everyone. My name's Emma, and I am vice president of the student council at school. And among that, I have voluntarily taken over the Instagram for spreading information about what's going on at student council along with various other clubs. And in recent events, like trigger canning, we had to kind of shift stuff because of weather and stuff like that, and I was talking it over with a few other people. And an idea that I had thought of was creating, like, a central school Facebook account. We don't have one, we have an athletics one, but I think that having a central student-run Facebook account would be really beneficial, because the PD was able to thankfully spread information about trigger canning, but I think spreading information about what's happening at the school would also be really beneficial to the Facebook group for Newmarket and various other things. I would probably say it'd be run for, like, not just athletics, I think that we could also mention that, various, that there is one for that, but I think, like, Net Zero, National Honor Society Student Council, there's civic, civics, passion projects that are happening throughout with Ms. McGilvery's class, and I think that that'd be a really cool way to showcase stuff. We could show stuff for the music program and stuff like that, like advertise concerts, we could advertise the play that goes on every year, and I think that would be really beneficial. And I wouldn't mind being that driving force behind it this year, obviously I can't take it over next year. But an idea I had was keeping it in student council, because we do have a media person. This year, it fell through, so I took it over, but I think that that could be a good road for it. I just brought it up to you guys, because I've talked to a few different teachers, and they said in the past, the administrative was a little bit more restrictive about it, and I just kind of wanted to get your feedback.
I could picture it being really useful for Forten, for extended learning opportunities as well.
First of all, very kind of you, people over the age of 45 who use Facebook, so appreciate that, but yeah, I mean, I guess the only, the thing I'd recommend is the dapper gentleman up there in the sound booth. Him knows a tremendous amount about, he runs the town Facebook pages and has, I would dare to say, probably run into every kind of moderation problem that you might encounter, so it might be worth your time to talk to him about how he does that and the controls he puts in place, because, you know, since he took that over, it has greatly reduced the amount of unnecessary angst and conflict that happens there.
Have you brought it to Mr. Corman yet?
I have not. I just wanted to try to get a feel for it. I know Ms. McGilvery was, in the past, had been shot down with the kind of communication through different medias, but we, I think, every single club in our school at least has an Instagram account, but I think it'd be maybe a more controlled way of having it be school-centered, so that it's not a thousand different groups, where we could have a way to share everything that's happening, especially if things are shifting, and I think it'd be a great way to just kind of communicate what our school does, because even though we're such a small school or such a close-knit community, we do so much, and I don't think the town knows nearly enough about what we do, and I think it'd be a great way to open up communication for that.
I know the board, in the past, we've had conversations about whether to have a school board Facebook page, and it's always come back to who's gonna manage it and moderate and do that kind of thing, and the biggest challenge is getting someone to do that, so... I would suggest having a conversation with Mr. Corman, and then let's see where we can take it.
Yeah, definitely, 100%.
Do we need policies we need to consider?
There are specific policies regarding social media, but there's nothing that absolutely prohibits it. I think it really comes down to how you manage things, ethical conduct, that kind of thing.
This may be a good opportunity for, if there's any civics kids here, but, so the board doesn't actually do anything with the administration of the school. We set policies at a higher level, but I think we're all interested, and as Superintendent Allen said, I think bringing it up to the principal and that chain makes a lot of sense.
I think in addition to a lot of community members not knowing about some of those things, I think also they would love to see them, even if they're not able to attend, so, you know, something that you would like to know about or see on display, that maybe your work or other commitments prevent you from actually going into it.
Some of the meetings that I've been to, they wanted to get public school stories out for the public to see, so I think that might be a great way for us, for you, PR from Newmarket, to highlight all that you do, because this is my first, I've only been on the school board here since March, and I'm overwhelmed with everything that you do, so it's nice to know. The other thing, do you think you have anybody ready for next year?
Typically, in student council, there's definitely a lot of leaders in there, and I would say it's a really representative club for a school. I think there'd definitely be people, there's always somebody who moves up. I just had to take it over, because there was something that fell through with the original person, but yeah, like I said, I'm in line.
I think as long as, like, we have, like, a general account for, like, Newmarket High School, you can also collaborate on posts, so like, since, like, Net Zero already has an Instagram, or student council already has had an Instagram, they can just collaborate on the posts and post it from their end, so, like, as long as the account is existing, and then people can just collaborate on that, and it will post on the actual account, so you don't have to have, like, a certain person running the account.
Usually the challenge is, you know, when you have clubs and organizations that have information you want to share, that's generally not where the issues come up. It's usually when you're moderating the dialogue that might come up as a result, and unfortunately, there are times when it's not what we want, reflecting on the school, so that's usually where the challenges come up, so I'm sure we come up with a plan today.
Superintendent Allen?
Well, thank you. I'll be fairly quick. First thing I wanted to mention is, as Kathy mentioned, there is a law being discussed at the state level that looks like it has traction. The governor seems to be supportive, and it's basically that would require schools to not start until after Labor Day. So normally, this time of year, we start talking about next year's calendar, so one of the things I want to tell you about is probably next month, I'm gonna come to you with two versions of a calendar. One that would be, here's what I would recommend if we have normal sea rain, and one that would be if we have to shift to starting school after Labor Day. Last year, I would have told you, oh, there's no way they're gonna pass a law at the last minute and make it go into effect for next year, and then the cell phone thing happened, and it happened so quickly that I realized that this is the way politics sometimes run, so I think we need to be ready for it. So, anyway, just know that that will come up, and that does have ramifications on the SST calendar, because remember, we already have to match our calendar SST, so you add another, it's reaching the point where there's almost nothing left for us to discuss as a board, it's just, you start, you know, there's very limited adjustments we can make. Anyway, be aware of that, that's coming.
I guess the good part is that SST has to follow, or all the schools that send the SST has to follow the same law.
They already have their calendars set.
Yeah, exactly. They already have a sample, so we'll probably just mirror that. Second thing I wanted to mention, just wanted to give a quick congratulations to our facilities director, Dave Riley. He was named one of the facilities directors of the year by New Hampshire Association of Business Administrators, which is pretty exciting. He's gonna be honored at the February '27, '28 conference, so it's pretty exceptional. Obviously, we know Dave's a great guy, but clearly people outside of us also think so. And I put that alongside, I remember last meeting or two ago, I told you about Jason Carey's cyber award, so our various departments are definitely distinguishing themselves around the state, so congratulations to Dave. I also wanted to take a minute just to say thank you to the, we got our counseling department here tonight, but thank you for all the work that the counseling department did to put on the, what do we call, sorry, the, the sale, what do you, thrift store, thank you. I don't know why that word wasn't coming to me. I was saying, the thrift store, it was very well received, very well attended, and a particular thank you to Tamara Rillo and Sam Scarfle for the work they did on that, but it was, it's wonderful, and, so anyway, thank you for that. I also wanted to throw out the spaghetti supper at NES last week, my goodness, they had 800 people, that's the record, 800 people came to have spaghetti at the elementary school. It's just, it really speaks to the kind of community that Newmarket is.
And it was very good.
And it was good spaghetti, there you go, yeah. So, that was, that was really, really...
Some years we don't get that many people on Election Day.
I know, I know. Maybe if we serve spaghetti in the town hall, we would have...
All right, there you go.
There you go. So, anyway, so there's that. And just a reminder I wanted to make, just, we'll talk about budget and budget development here later in the meeting, but just a reminder that December 1st is the public, the first public presentation of our draft budget to the budget committee, and they have a follow-up Q&amp;A session. It's either December 8th or 15th, but I don't think they've officially set that yet. And then, one last thing that I suspect will be well received by our students and our staff, I would, if there are no objections from the board, I would like to make Tuesday, December 23rd, an early release day, because it's the day right before the holidays, and it's somewhat debatable of the educational value of hanging on till the end, and people are traveling, so if there are no objections, I would go forth with that. So, I'm looking around for any objections, any objections? No, okay, all right, then that's what we're gonna do. And I have consulted with the teachers and the parent union, and they're cool with it. So, thank you, and that's all I have.
All right. Moving right along. All right, discussion items, if it's okay with the board, we would like to just scooch up agenda item number two underneath discussion, so that Jody and Leslie can give us the information on the post graduate survey.
They're coming to the podium. I did, let me just say a couple of quick words, just to remind the board, remember, you have one of your goals to start trying to collect data, and one of the things we talked about was the possibility of doing an alumni survey, and I suggested that idea to Jody and Leslie, and lo and behold, they're here tonight to share with you the idea that they have developed on that.
Technology, because we were told our presentation would be in here, so, thank you.
Not active on the technology.
Today's been terrifying, actually, our technology skills.
That's why Kim is here tonight to help us with...
I know, look at Kim, she's the new technology teacher.
We're in real trouble.
Technology and food, family and consumer science, somehow it puts our...
You full screen?
It's, you've signed out, I'm going to try one more time.
Yeah.
I blame Jason Carey?
Are these, they didn't check off show password?
Should be available on the public net, on public guest.
Maybe you can't do the slide review, maybe you could just...
It won't let me click, because we're signed out.
Click on the slide, and just, yeah, just do it that way, so you can see if it's easy to talk.
We all have it as well.
And we have it on our...
We all have it.
We have it on our...
I'm Leslie Robillard, I'm one of the high school counselors, and this is my second year at Newmarket, and this is...
I'm Jody Calonan, and I feel like it's my 25th year here, or is it my fifth year here in Newmarket?
And we're here tonight to talk about an alumni survey, and we currently do a senior survey, so we're gonna talk a little bit about what we're currently doing and what we would like to do moving forward. So, an alumni survey is a great way to understand, to get some information, so that we can improve and know what we're doing well and what we can work on in the future. Alumni feedback matters, because it can help us identify gaps in the curriculum, it can help us improve student support systems, it measures the effectiveness of our programs, preparing them for... We actually require them to complete a senior survey before they can participate in Senior Week, so we make sure that everybody is answering that survey. And through that, we have contact information for alumni in the class of 2020 through the most recent graduating class. So we have over 300 alumni that we can reach out to to get information about their experiences. What we've currently been asking on the senior survey is their immediate post-graduation plans, we ask about their academic experience, their favorite classes, courses that they wished that we offered here, and just their overall educational experience. We do ask about if they feel ready for their next step, whatever that might be for them, whether that's entering the workplace or going to college. We do ask them some information or some feedback on specific programs, like our advisory program. We do ask them to identify any staff who made a significant contribution to their success. So that's really nice to read. And then we do ask for open feedback for counseling, we do ask for feedback on our program, what we can improve, what we can do better. We also ask for feedback for administration and share that with the administration, just general school information. And we read all of those, and we have, we make changes based on that feedback.
Except for when you're not a student.
When possible, we make changes.
Well, I mean, it's funny you mention that, but we would love to do that. It's healthier for the seniors and for all the students. For all the students, it's better to do that, but it presents a bunch of challenges.
A number of schools have.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think it'd be nine. So they're not wrong to suggest it. They're going to have to do it.
But it's working with the elementary school, figuring out what is out there.
So here are some quotes that we got from the class of 2023, some, you know, positive feedback about the attention that they get at being a small school, how, you know, close they are with their teachers. So just some feedback there. And then, the reality check, of course, we're always going to get some constructive, some constructive criticism, ideas for growth, so some feedback there. And again, we have made some changes based on that, such as our academic interventions that we're doing this year, study labs supported by teachers, and some changes to our health program.
Senior surveys are always enlightening. Some of the questions really didn't make sense that we're asking. So as Leslie and I came aboard, we've tweaked some of those questions too, just try to get more pointed information, which has been really helpful, too. So some of the things that our students said that they wanted to learn about is a way that we are moving in some ways, some by choice and some by state standards. Obviously, life skills, we talk a lot about financial literacy, that is going to be coming to our current eighth graders by graduation standards. Adult-in-basics, college preparedness, a lot of technology and engineering requests, too. A lot of AP requests, we do always have a handful of students that take AP Psychology every year, so they would love to see that in our building as well, as well as some specialized science areas, too. So those were consistently taken from the past five years. We looked at all the things that were requested, and so that's where we pulled all that information into from as well. So when Todd mentioned last spring to us that he thought this may be a goal for you this year, we stopped to think about the importance of any type of alumni survey, and what's the actual purpose of it. And of course, it's to try to improve what we're doing, or improve upon what we could be doing differently. So we stopped and took a look at what types of questions that we thought could be asked to collect data that could then be used appropriately to help just magnify some of our programs and current processes. But, so one of the questions we're going to get in, I'll show you, hopefully, hopefully the tablet opened, we'll actually show you the survey. But the recommended key survey questions revolve around the prior students, the alums' current status, what they're currently doing, how prepared they felt, what they felt their post-grad challenges were, what their potential academic path was, where they felt there were some skill gaps, as well as how they've been able to apply their skills as well. We met with Debbie Jankowski about a month ago. We sat with her, created a survey that she's going to be able to help us to collect that data from that survey, so we can start filtering it into pockets and break it down. So she's been very helpful with that as well. So we're going to take a look at that survey and just go through each question, so you can see what we're suggesting to take a look at. The timeline of getting this alumni survey out, we met with Todd earlier in the week, and it makes sense in case there are students at our college bound to send the survey out after the new year, get the holidays through. Everybody's in chaos mode from Thanksgiving to Christmas, whether it's the holidays or if they're in college taking final exams. So the month of January is the suggested month to actually send the survey out, just to be, hopefully, as good as they can get, and hopefully, they look at emails. So we'll have to put out, we do have a counseling Facebook page that some people, some of you are on, that we update. I will tell you, the filter that I use is I don't accept comments. So that's a really nice filter, because you could give them, and sometimes people could be given a million dollars, and they're still going to tell you how you should have given them it differently. So we just don't look for comments. But that could be a way, too, for us to get that message out to families. If you have a student that graduated between this year and this year, have them check their email. And it was all personal emails that we capture in, at the end of May, every year. So the alumni survey, again, the who of that is the classes of 22, 23, 24, and 25. And again, using the existing email contacts that we have. We'd be focusing about 10 questions, mixing some short answer and multiple choice with required or potential responses. And again, we'd be using the Google Forms platform, so that it would have an automated data compiling system for, like, easy analysis in there. So let's see if I can get into the survey now. Okay, I guess well, I'm not going to be able to unless I open my survey. Because there's only a couple of us that are considered editors of the survey, I would have to be logged into this computer. Do you mind me taking a minute to log in?
I just logged in to mine.
Do you, are you, you would have access to be able to share this?
I was able to get into the survey, I can do it.
Oh, next time. Yeah, I have, we have to be able to publish this, and we don't want to publish this until you all looked at it. And then, we're also going to present this, sorry, we're also going to present this to the staff at our next staff meeting in December, which if it's not the 9th, then it would be the 16th, just so they can also see the types of questions that we're going to be putting out to their former students as well. So, there we go. So there's a little blurb at the top, just letting them know their participation in this questionnaire is completely voluntary. Please complete the 10 questions, I need to double-check that. It was in fact 10 questions, because we did some editing survey below to let us know how you were doing. By collecting feedback from our former students, we can gain insights into the effectiveness of our curriculum, programs, and services. Obviously, we want to collect their first and last name, the year of graduation, have that person check all that apply to them, whether they're taking a gap year, working part-time, working full-time, are they in the military? So we want to make sure to capture all of the things that could possibly be happening or other, because there's other things, maybe we have somebody in the Peace Corps that we don't know about. So we want to make sure that we're capturing all of those things. How prepared did you feel for your future immediately after high school graduation? Do you feel that what you are doing now aligns with what you initially envisioned for yourself? What skill do you wish the high school had emphasized more? These were, we also took these from previous senior surveys, various comments about things that students did not feel prepared for, so that's where these topics came from. How often do you use skills directly learned in high school? A little long, a little bit of a short answer next would be, what were some challenges or highlights for you? What were the most valuable skills that you learned during your time here? If you are in college, what is your current major? And is there anything else you'd like to share about your experiences at New Market Junior Senior High School? So we're trying to capture, you know, we start with, obviously, multiple choice, and then some short answers to give people the ability to emphasize certain things, but without making them get into too lengthy. I don't know about you, but when you make a phone call, and at the end, they're saying, oh, click too if you want to do a survey, that is the last thing I'm clicking. Especially for the cable company. So we're trying to keep it as, you know, as short as possible, but also capturing what we've seen in the senior surveys has been valuable information. Let's see where it all lands. And that has really hit in a nutshell. Thoughts, questions?
So one thing I would ask the board, because obviously, this is part of a goal that you have, are there things that you would like to suggest that be added to the survey that we could solicit from recent graduates? And just a quick acknowledgement, the reason 22 to 25 is the range, it's, you want kids that have had recent experiences with the school to be able to give you relevant feedback. You know, kids that graduated in 2015, I want them to feel great about New Market, but what happened in 2015 is not relevant to what's happened in the last five years. So it's important to zero in on that. And then, I would comment, every year, I do look at the senior survey, you send it over to me, and I try to make a point of reaching out to a handful of the kids that have interesting responses, and just say, can we, you're interested in coming on down and just chatting for a bit? And every year, you know, half a dozen of them will come in and spend a few minutes just sharing things that happen. Sometimes it's just really good stuff, and once in a while, it's, I was frustrated by this, whatever, but it's, it is a really good cross-section of information. So, anyway, are there any thoughts that the board might have to share to, because we really, if we're going to do it, we really kind of feel like January, we want to time it, so we're particularly with the college kids that are home, hit them while they're home, and that might be when their mom or their dad's saying, you should do that. That's the best time to have the survey hit the ground.
If I have one question, to check all that apply to you, for the other, were they able to list what it was after?
I think we need to fix that to make it live in. Yeah, we'll have to make sure that they can answer that, like, a short answer. And when you're looking at, from the editor view, as I clicked in Todd's laptop, it looks like you could answer it lengthy, but it might just, because he's considered an editor.
One of the other ones below had other, and then a line.
I think we chatted a bit on Monday about the idea of maybe putting a comment, trying to do a comment with everyone, just in case anybody had anything additional they wanted to share.
I think it looks good. I'm shocked to hear that Todd thinks that parents of high school students have access to their kids' emails in any way, shape, or form. I can assure you, we don't. I guess the only thing I might suggest is that for some of them, I think Google tends to automatically put things in alphabetical order, and you may want to, I don't know, if that can be changed or whatever, but having, like, some are prepared, completely unprepared, completely prepared, and then neutral, it just gets confusing, so I don't know if there's a way to change that. It's only just stuck out.
Yeah, I picked up on that one, too.
I think people are used to a certain, like, flow.
Maybe just the option you choose for the question.
Right there.
Yeah, you see the way it goes to, like, the prepareds are separated, the unprepareds.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But that's the only thing you jumped on it. Other than that, it'd be great.
We're forcing reading comprehension.
That's a good point. Maybe this is the test, right?
This doesn't actually pertain to the survey, which I think is great, and I wish Jason was here, because this would almost entirely fall on him. I don't know if people have heard of something called EFL, email forwarding for life. I am not aware of a single college or university in the U.S. that doesn't do this, because it costs next to nothing. All you're doing is running a mailing delay, giving your, excuse me, giving your alumni the ability to go in whenever they get a new email address and say, here's where I want my email forwarded. Honestly, they could keep the same address they had for all thirteen years in New Market and it's probably good that we didn't do it before, because my understanding is the state is switching all of the secondary education from a dot US top level to a dot BU top level sometime in the not-too-distant future. But you just, basically, you create a subdomain, alum.numarket.k12.edu, and you're not storing anything, it doesn't really put an O in this on you, all you're doing is saying, if you know, if they've given us a new address, forwarding everything that comes to this. But if you use it very, very sparingly, and that's the key, if you start sending things to people through this that they don't want to, they'll drop out. If you use it very sparingly, how do you can have a way to get in touch with people almost indefinitely? You know, I graduated in 1994, people still send me emails, my psychology after all, so it's something to keep in mind.
I'll mention that to Jason. So any other feedback on the survey itself?
Just thank you so much for taking the time to do it and coming to present it.
So we'll connect and just kind of make some, polish it, polish it, and then start talking about going forward with it in January, then.
Yeah, that's great.
Awesome, thank you for doing this.
Thank you for helping us with our goal.
I was going to say, right, it's so easy to get goals done, isn't it?
Yeah, you want to check?
Thank you for that switch. And then we have the junior, senior high school unified arts presentation. It's so fun, we have other people.
Yeah.
Not that I don't like people, but.
Hi there, I am Christina Boivier, I am the middle school and high school art teacher in addition to Emma Blake. We were just welcomed in the opportunity, and so glad you guys are having us tonight to talk a little bit about all the wonderful things that we're doing in the UA department. We'll try to be fast, but there's a lot of fun things going on, including some fun upcoming field trips, and thank you all so much for helping me out really, really quickly for us. So these are just some random pictures that we're going to throw out. Our department consists of the net, Christina, Tony, Maria, and Kim. We all work together a lot cohesively and help each other out with a lot of different things, like performances, and shows, and concerts, and field trips. So these are just some shots from some of the stuff that we've done that has been a little bit of outreach. So these are just some shots from some of the stuff that we've done that has been a little bit of outreach and some kind of fun art classes that we have. There's a lot of art, so I apologize for that ahead of time. But there are some really awesome things that we're doing. So we work a lot with, most of these pictures here, the two on the side are from Art Club. Art Club is a huge, huge thing this year. I have 35 kids who've been coming every Monday. And I'm very excited because that's the biggest amount I've ever had, which is really, really cool. On the other side, we have Shay who is actually applying to college for art. So she is actually working on doing a portfolio in this picture and I'm helping her put it together. So she put it together for her application. So a lot of people that are involved in things beyond just school, which is kind of cool. We offer a lot of different programs, a lot of different classes. Introduction and advanced painting is one of my classes I love teaching the most. These are a lot of examples of things that have been painted by kids in the past. Two of these students are my current ones right now who are doing amazing work. We do house a lot of the advanced classes within the introduction classes right now because of the fact that we don't have that many openings for lots of different classes. So kids are able to get a more advanced experience when they are in an intro class with the rest of the kids too, which is fun. So they get lots of different kind of exposure to all different kinds of media. So we're running about four sections of that. I'll talk a little bit more about the eighth grade stuff later. We have a little bit of everything for high school, which we have pretty much everything. They try everything from painting, drawing, 3D design. And we pretty much will do anything they want to try to as long as we have the materials to do it. So it's a great discovery class. Intro to photography, they actually go back and do old school film and develop it in the darkroom, make their own prints and work all the way up to digital photography. And sorry if you want to throw anything in on that one. He's an awesome student in photography class. So anyway, we're lots of great kids. We offer lots of different classes for the high school students and middle school students. So right now, the sixth and seventh grade enrichment program is basically kind of a little bit of everything for their age group. The eighth graders are offered ceramics, painting and a little bit of everything this year. They've got to choose which one they wanted to do for art. I'm teaching a ceramics class to eighth graders right now. Next trimest, I'll be teaching a painting class. So what we're trying to do is work with them in such a way that it's a nice introduction to them, but not too much that they won't be able to move on to the high school classes and enjoy those too. So we offer intro to ceramics, photography, a little bit of everything, intro to painting, stained glass. And then all of the advanced classes are offered within those classes too. So if they want to take them as an independent study, they can come in and do their own curriculum, make up their own curriculum and decide what they want to do for their own projects for the semester. So it's kind of fun. We have Fun o' Clockwise, which is our magazine that we're going to offer every other year now because it makes a little bit more sense to try to do that. But it's kind of neat that they create all the art for it, all the writing for it, and then it's published and actually printed as a real magazine. This is us out enjoying looking for fun things to do for art. We take a lot of fun field trips, so we're going to the Museum of Fine Arts on December 18th. So thank you guys very much again. We're looking forward to doing that and then traveling around down at Quincy Market afterward. We go to a program at Bedrock Gardens. I'll talk a little bit about that later. We go to the Courier occasionally and we do a lot of field day events for the face painting for the elementary school in the spring, which is kind of fun. We've done a lot of drama field club trip, a field club, field trips for the drama club. Just recently went to a show at Sea Coast Rep. Heading off to the Museum of Fine Arts trip, which actually has a Wintle Homer event too, which is going to be fun to go, Paint from Maine. When we go to the museum, the kids actually go through and they find artwork and they try to kind of make it up in charades. And this is their assignment while they're there to take pictures of them acting out what they look like in the picture or in the artwork. So it's kind of a fun thing for them to do. We go to Bedrock Gardens. We are involved in a student art show there every year. We go, we were invited by the Dover High School art teachers over there. She's now retired, but she's continuing to run the show. So we create all kinds of things that are displayed outside on the trails at Bedrock Gardens. And if you guys haven't been there, you should definitely go check it out. It's a beautiful sculpture garden with all kinds of neat plants and trees and trails. And it's a neat thing to be a part of. So when we go at the end of the show, we go to pick up the artwork. We take a whole group of kids to go over to do on plein air painting. So we go out and take all of our painting supplies and a picnic lunch and we wander all over Bedrock Gardens and have a great time. A little face painting with the elementary school. Been working that. It's a fun day too. Kids love that. And it's a nice way to meet the incoming fifth graders too, which is kind of fun. Annette and I try to hit a lot of different workshops to try to keep ourselves fresh with our artwork and try to come up with new things to share with the kids. So we've gone to one, this is one we went to last year where we did another painting class. It's the Olsen House, which is one that's famous by Andrew Wythe paintings at the University of San Diego. We also went to another one last, this past October, actually, another painting and pen and ink workshop. So it's kind of fun to be the student, which is neat. We have lots of clubs. I can speak about the Art Club and Improv and Drama Club. Everybody else can talk about theirs later on. Art Club has been amazing. I am surprised I can fit that many kids in my room, but they are all coming. I've got kids that have been there since sixth grade and are now seniors. So it's kind of neat to see the progression and a lot of sixth graders that are coming this year too, which is really kind of neat. And Improv with Miss Blake, she meets on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. They had a great show last week, as we talked about. Drama Club's coming up. There's going to be starting on December 4th and that's open to all grades, sixth through 12. Of course, this is the improv show from last week. Some shots from the show. A whole crew. And they'll be starting on, working on Shrek musical for the musical performance for this year. They can participate in lots of different ways. There's a lot of students that make up this group and I'm trying to speak for her as much as I can, but it's kind of fun to be able to work with her and do some of the stuff for the shows, which is kind of nice. So that's pretty much it. We have a really good time in art and it's just a nice kind of social, emotional learning for the kids. They really have a lot of hands-on things to do. And hopefully it's a lot of fun for them. A lot of them just come in and just hang out sometimes and do work when they have study halls and things like that. So it's just lovely. So anyway, if you have any questions, you let me know and that's pretty much the update from art.
Got a great program and lots of kids and lots of excitement.
We love it. It's good to have you. It's fun. Thank you.
Love it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Tony Foye representing the music department. Thank you for the opportunity to brag about how invested our kids are. The one piece of information I'd like to share is 2023, we had approximately 70 kids in the music department. Last year was about 100 and this year trimester two, we're creeping up on 140. So it's like a 40% year after year growth, which is pretty awesome. Next year, our seventh eighth grade band is going to be about 70 kids. So I'm mentally preparing for that. One classroom, 70 kids. Some educational trips. Spare you reading through it. We go through a variety of things. We have the UNH campus nearby, which is a lot of music opportunities for our students. Something I'm super jealous of, something that many musicians never get to accomplish is performing in some venue like the Chicago Symphony Hall. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We have a lot of ensembles that do a variety of things. The musical has a lot of moving parts, as you can imagine. The pit band, the singers, the performers, the ensemble cast. It's hundreds of hours over the course of four months that they're preparing every day after school. Marching band through connections through Portsmouth High School. We were able to have our, some of our band students participate in their high school band. This past year, they actually went to Disney and got to perform. It was a very busy, very amazing year. These festivals, there are a variety of them. Some of them are honors festivals for individual students who audition and get in. Some of them are for like in the bottom right, large group festivals where the entire group performs. We get evaluated, judged. We have a clinic. We receive judges tapes that we later review as a class and program. The Trium Music Honor Society. We had our first induction ceremony this past couple of weeks ago. It is for students that are recognized as leaders academically strong and musically strong in the music department. It's a nationally recognized music society. This is just for your convenience, that at some point you want to look at all the evenings after school, Saturdays, Sundays that the kids are spending their time on. I invite you to take a look. Thank you for coming.
It just kind of struck me while you were talking, Tony. No, not at all. It's not a question. Just it's clear that the passion that you and Christina and Kim and everyone out in spring just make these programs come alive. And I just can't imagine like if people like you weren't here, what it would be like, right? I mean, it's just amazing.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kim Emery and I teach in the Consumer Science Department. And I just want to say firstly, thank you for allowing me to change the curriculum. I was here approximately two months when I brought it to Andy that I wanted to make a big curriculum change. And he brought it to you and you all approved. So thank you. And these are the classes that I am currently teaching. One of the big changes was the Introduction to Hospitality. The, I used to teach this course at the college, SUNY Klatsberg. And I also, when I was there, I'd see all these kids coming in with college credit. And I wanted that for our students as well. And so now this is the third year that I've been teaching it. And there will be at the end of this year, 26 students that are going into college with three, at least three credits. And what was really important about this for me was that you didn't have to be that AP student in order to get those college credits. So this is for our students, so long as they are doing well in school, have a B average and an A in my classes, then they can take this course. So thank you. That's been, I think it's very successful. And we have some students that are kind of on the cusp of may or may not continue on to college. And I feel that this is kind of making that change for them to make that decision to actually attend college. I also teach sewing. This is one of those classes where it is, one of those things where students do something that's difficult. And they have to, they learn how to operate the sewing machine. They come up with their own patterns. The tooth is where we went to the elementary school and delivered all of those tooth pillows. There's now 80 kindergartners. So we have some pillows that we'll have to just give to the nurse and then she can give them out as.
There's actually 88 kindergartners.
So it's a little bit more than what we introduced.
My son's still, he's in fifth grade. And if they're watching, he's going to be mortified. Still uses that. And it's like the little pocket swallowing off. As soon as I saw it, I recognized.
That's great. Thank you. Well, those little tooth pillows have been sitting in my cabinet, so I'm going to get those down right away. So that's sewing, Foods 1 and 2. This is, our students are running through a lot of different things. They do everything from breakfast to dinner, all with the, you know, meal planning, budgeting, healthy choices pieced in there. One thing that is allowed with the fact that you graciously given us a budget is that our students can learn hands-on. And it really makes a difference in the classroom because they're allowed to be kind of up and walking around, working in groups, which is one of those VOG things and life skill things that they need to be able to work with other people. So I really believe strongly in that and we are able to, we are cooking and baking every single day of the week.
And that hits a lot of amazing.
They really do a great job.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. Since we do need it five, maybe we could have a menu.
And this is the baking class, which was fairly new. Foods 1 and 2, I incorporated a lot of the components from the previous courses, but this was something that was brand new. They are learning in this everything from yeast bread, quick bread, incorporating art into their baking, coming up with their own recipes. And this is one of those things where you are incorporating all of your math. Guess what, everybody? You do need fractions. So incorporating the math and science into the everyday baking and again, working in groups and working with all different kinds of people and having a good time doing it, usually. So thank you for your time and your commitment to Unified Arts. I really do appreciate it because I have been in schools where it has not been supported in the budget and it really does make a difference. So we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess Tony wants his laptop back.
I think cooking is one of those things that more and more high school students don't necessarily have time if they have a job or if they have sports or after-school activities to be learning that at home. And then you're all of a sudden expected to know how to do it. So I just think it's so.
Adult thing.
Yeah.
And just to note, like my classes, I think I might be speaking out of turn, but it is in the doing in that it is not, you know, if you burn bacon, it's okay. So long as you actually were participating in burning that bacon and then you learned from it. A lot of times when you, when students are put to task that they actually have to produce a product, they start getting nervous about the grade. So it is more that they are participating and learning and then willing to go on. So that grit and perseverance, they really are doing that in the classroom.
Do you have them, I know you said you have them make budgets. Do they actually go out and do the shopping too or?
No.
No.
The bus, I have not done that, like the going in and doing the shopping. The bus down to Market Basket would be, I don't know.
That would be, that would be a lot.
It would be a learning experience. Yes.
I just think.
Very understandable.
Overall, the same way that there are, we've heard from students about how football across country or being in the play is the thing that got them through an experience or the reason that they continued to participate in their academics. I think for so many students, it's also the arts. I work with an art teacher who, you know, art saved me. It was one of those things. That's why I do what I do. So.
And it's clear from everything that was presented tonight. We have a lot of engaged, excited, passionate kids that are doing great stuff. And I think something Gary said, you know, a lot of times Unified Arts programs are successful because of the wonderful people that do it. And you guys also bring a tremendous amount of energy and opportunity and always looking for creative ways to give our kids wonderful experiences. So thank you for that.
Now the health benefits.
Now the fun talk. And feel free to, you don't have to stay. Trust me. I know the health insurance thing is probably not high on your list of things to do.
It's a continuation of the presentation.
I apologize for my tardiness. My name is Ann Ellis of the Eight-Wiggin Drive in Newmarket. I'm a proud parent of a Newmarket class of 2025 Top 10 graduate and a Newmarket class of 2028 student. I'm here tonight to speak in support of our hardworking Unified Arts teachers and the essential role that they play in helping the district meet both the school board's goals for this year and the district's three long-term goals. As you work to understand postgraduate student achievement, I hope you look beyond traditional college and career measures and also ask students what they are doing outside their academic program. While only a handful of students will become professional athletes, musicians or artists, we should be cultivating individuals who remain physically active throughout their lives, who appreciate and participate in music and the arts, who create, who build and who find joy in capturing the beauty around them. These lifelong habits and passions begin here in the K-12 Unified Arts Experience. To use my son as an example, he is majoring in chemistry and pursuing a career in that field in his freshman year of college. Yet when he arrived at college and had the chance to choose an orientation trip, he selected one focused on photography. Throughout the rigors of this fall on his freshman year, calculus, chemistry and more, he has unexpectedly become deeply engaged in sports, photography and journalism. I am confident he never would have explored either area had he not taken photography with Mrs. Blake and journalism with Ms. Fiore here at Newmarket High School. His Unified Arts electives opened a door for him that is now an important part of his identity, his well-being, post-high school, all-state and honors festivals, the Music Honor Society and the chance to perform in marching band in partnership with Portsmouth High School, to name a few. These experiences extend learning well beyond the classroom and enrich our community. These experiences extend learning well beyond the classroom and enrich our community. Because of this clear growth, I was disappointed that the district chose not to fill the .5 full-time equivalent music position that has been budgeted the past two years. And I was discouraged to see in the FY27 proposal being voted on tonight, I believe, that this position has now been permanently removed. As we strive to balance opportunity with the realities of being a small district and as we continue working to meet individual student needs, district goals, and our vision of a graduate, I urge you to keep the importance of our Unified Arts teachers at the forefront of your decision-making. These programs are not extras. They are foundational to developing well-rounded, healthy, engaged graduates. I respectfully ask that you reconsider reductions or reallocations that diminish Unified Arts programming. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, and I apologize.
No, thank you, that needed.
Okay, so I don't think I need to explain to the board that we've had some challenges with regards to health insurance over the last couple of years. Frankly, it is redundant to say, but the whole world is having, at least all of the United States is having challenges around health insurance. So obviously, we very recently got the assessment, which we'll talk about in a minute, so cost of insurance has been a major factor. In both of our collective bargaining agreements, there's a provision that allows for a, that calls for a committee to meet regularly to review insurance. And then the provision within both contracts to reopen negotiations should there be a recommendation for a better or a change to the plan. So for this year, we did convene the committee, and there's a list of 10 people that served in. I do want to take a minute to read the names out, so just to thank all the people who served on it. Pam Allen from the elementary school, Kim Durant, co-president of the NTA, but also a teacher here at the junior/senior high, Jen Drew, a school psychologist at elementary, Meg Daly-Dollaf, a pair at the junior/senior high, Kate Wilson, a pair at the, also co-president, but a pair at the junior/senior high, Teresa Marver, our payroll and benefits coordinator, Bryant, who's here tonight, Patty, who's also here tonight, Gary, who's also here tonight, and myself. We served on a committee. This is an outgrowth of a committee that existed last year. We thought we were being proactive. We reviewed all options, made a recommendation, and then the pooled insurance landscape kind of went the heck in a handcart very rapidly and forced us to make different choices. So obviously, we ended up choosing to stay with school care last year. But with all of the uncertainty, we felt it was essential that we have this committee. So the committee was formed with a very narrow task. The task was to take a look at the two remaining pooled insurance options in the state and to make a recommendation for, excuse me, to make a recommendation for how to move forward. So clearly, they, the committee took a look at two plans, or two, two plan administrators, I should say, school care, which offers a variety of plans, and health trust, that offers a variety of plans. So we met three different times. The first, the first meeting was largely to just set the landscape, to talk about the current situation, the health assessment, talk about the political climate in the state, what pooled insurance coverage was, and kind of have that conversation. That was our first meeting. The second meeting, we took a deep dive into the two plan options that were being provided to us by school care and health trust. And we got our, got our questions answered on the variety of plans. And then we met a third time on November 14th with as up-to-date and complete rate information as we could get. I do want to acknowledge, school care gave us an actual, exact rate. Health trust, because they were, quite frankly, being inundated with requests for, for rate information, took the approach of giving us a range of possibilities. So they gave us what they called, what a low cost would be, what a middle cost would be, and what a high cost would be, with the idea that if you went with them in March, they would tell you what your actual rate was. So that was a little bit challenging to really do a full apples-to-apples comparison because we really didn't know for sure what, what the real cost ultimately would be. So we took a look at those two plans. And ultimately, what the committee just recommended was, due to all the uncertainty that currently exists, that it made sense to stay with school care. With that, we need to acknowledge that school care is actually changing the plans. Even though staying with school care is what the recommendation is, it's not, not recommended with the same plan because the same plan is not going to exist moving forward. We currently have a plan, it's called the yellow, they offer three plans. The yellow with choice, which is a plan that allows you to do this health survey and you get a couple of thousand dollars available for, to cover deductibles. The yellow plan, which is the same as the with choice, except you don't do the survey and you don't get the access to the $2,000. And then there's a high deductible plan called the orange plan. So that's what they currently offer. They're now offering what they call a 2.0 version. So really, the fundamental difference is they've increased the deductibles. So the deductibles are $250 higher for an individual and $500 higher for a family. The health trust options were, there were more of them, but basically, what we, what we discovered, the difference between the two plans were that health trust does copays, whereas school care is more of a deductible kind of a structure. When it came down to it, though, we took a look at the actual cost and the, the switching to the school care 2.0 plan will save us $86,000 compared to where we are today within the teacher group. And it will save us somewhere around $140,000 compared to where we are, compared to what we budgeted for, for this year. So the committee is recommending that we go with school care. The issues that they spent time talking about, that really drove the decision, ultimately the issue was instability, instability in a number of ways. Instability in that we wouldn't, we wouldn't know the rate from health trust until March, and that's problematic. But also, there is, there continues to be a national and state-level debate about what plans are going to be able to be offered. And unfortunately, the model that health trust used is sort of in the, I guess you could say, in the bullseye of the Secretary of State's office right now, because they're challenging the methodology that they use to determine rates. And so there's a possibility that that is not as stable as you might think. So our ultimate reason for recommending going with school care was not that we necessarily think school care's offered the better plan, which is Cigna, but because, given the circumstances, it's the most stable option. And so basically, to go to the school care 2.0 with choice model, and 98% of our people take the high, that, that version of the current plan, it's a 12.6% increase over this past year. Remember when we built our budget? We were planning for the worst. We budgeted at 21%. So it's significantly less than what was budgeted. So anyway, bottom line, recommendation is school care 2.0 plan. So happy to take questions, and Bryant's here too, and I'm sure he can answer questions as well.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say, and correct me if I'm misstating this, but health-wise or options-wise, I think the plans are pretty much similar. You're not going to get a whole lot different options with either plan. There's some nuance in how the plan operates, as Todd mentioned there. The health trust does have a different provider, which currently has a, a less, not less stringent, but Cigna tends to be more difficult to kind of get approvals and to get your, you know, your funding back, your payment from them for services, which we acknowledge, but it just comes down to acknowledging that we just don't have enough information from health trust and you kind of have to go with the conservative, you know, sort of approach. I think we all agree, and, and I think we all frankly think that next year, we just have to have another discussion about this. And hopefully, things will settle down and we can make a decision that, that might be economically a little more beneficial for people, hopefully, with all of the data, when we just don't have that data.
Yeah, and I would, thank you for pointing that out, because that was part of the recommendation, that this would be for '26, '27, and we bring back the band next year and do it again and review, and maybe do it earlier so we can potentially have rates that we can work from. Part of what has happened this year is, right now, there are two options. 25% of the state is with health, with school care, and 75% of pooled insurers is with health trust. So, as you can imagine, anybody thinking about changing is reaching out to health trust, asking for information, and they just, they're not in, and not in a position to do it. And the other thing, which is the unknown, is if a bunch of people jump ship, what does that, what does that do to school care? And also, what does it do to the risk level that health trust is taking on? And does that mean the rates have to be higher because it is a pooled thing? So there's, there's a number of variables that are just very challenging. Do you want to add anything, Bryant?
I think you summarized it, but to me, it's the risk factor, it's kind of driving what, how I word it. And the main variable that we don't know are the actual rates. Otherwise, like Gary said, the plans are actually pretty similar from a cost perspective, at least currently, although school care historically has had lower rating indices here on you. But the pros and cons largely sort of negate each other. So it's really that uncertainty that I was most focused on.
Bryant, you brought a good point that we probably should point out, is that the committee used, I don't know the term, but it's a, it's the type of negotiation, or not negotiation, but discussion, when everybody agrees to...
Consensus model, yeah.
Consensus building approach, and yeah, it was a really good approach, and just so the board knows that everybody unanimously agreed.
Yeah, I think even people who would have preferred health trust recognized that it wasn't a real good choice right now and said, yeah, I'm comfortable with this, the school care option. And I think, and I've had conversations with both, both unions, by the way, were represented on the committee, and they're very, very supportive of the decision. Obviously, assuming the board agrees with the recommendation, next step is to enter into negotiations with the two unions. Fortunately, we already have a negotiation team with the NSSA. We just have to pick a time to, to make that happen.
Go back again?
We'd have to determine if we wanted to have another, another team for the teachers group. Basically, the way it would work, because the issues are different with the two groups, you can have the same team if you want.
What we are, oh, that's true, because it's a different negotiation technically, we need to create a new team, you're right.
So the way, the way it would work would be, we would have one meeting, probably right after Thanksgiving, where we would just do an informational share with both negotiating teams, all the information we have about those plans, and then individually negotiate with each union. It's not highly complex negotiations, it's a, it's really a one-issue discussion, but the issues are different with the paragroup versus the teacher group.
Yeah. I guess I'm the only one sitting up here who's not been a direct participant, and I appreciate all the work the committee's done to get to this point. I agree, just to take a year and see if we can find the solid ground beneath our feet. Again, but I, I, this is more common for future boards than current, but I mean, whether this is the intent or not, it really feels like what the Secretary of State is pushing is going to lead the pooled insurance carriers to, to a place where they are not as beneficial cost-wise compared to the for-profit insurers, as they've always been in the past. I have no idea whether that's the intention or not, but that does seem to be where things are heading, so. I mean, when we come to this discussion next year, it may make sense to open up and just talk to someone as distasteful as the argument can be, to just talk to some of the for-profits and see where they're coming from.
I suspect that the insurance landscape is not going to be settled next year or the year after, it's going to be quite a few years before. I mean, reasonably standard or stable, but it takes...
But I think for one year even, just for mental health, the Newmarket community's teachers, there's been so many unknowns with policies and laws and bills and potential changes, but this is one area where there doesn't have to be that potential big change that you don't know.
That was actually one of the reasons I've already said, we're with school care, let's give, maybe it's a tiny bit more than maybe hypothetically it would have been, but let's, let's be consistent, let's not have to learn a new plan, a new process for the teachers, let's keep that a little bit of stability we can.
Yeah, there's been no switch in insurance, this is not fun.
Because you might have to do a different provider.
I did it once last year.
Yeah, exactly, so.
All right. All right.
Well, Bryant here, if you don't mind, as we all know, Bryant was put into the very, very, very deep end, very, very quickly, in his business administrator career. I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the amazing work you've done, not just in the spreadsheets, but on the budget and everything else this year. We really appreciate it. I'm just, stood up and just looking over that position. It was not a fair ask of you, but we really appreciate it.
Yes.
Bryant likes the spotlight.
Yeah.
But while we have you up there, the next is our health insurance assessment payment.
Would you like to talk about?
So as Todd mentioned in the last board meeting, school care presented at their annual meeting, another payment option, which is if we pay one-third of our assessment, again, it's $417,961, by the end of this calendar year, we won't be charged any interest with the, for the remaining balance. Previously, they had said if we don't pay by the January 1st, we would start getting charged 0.5% per month. And we calculated this out to be almost $13,000 in interest expense if we waited until the last minute. So how we are proposing handling the payment of the assessment that we owe is that we will pay one-third by the end of the calendar year, which is $139,320. And we propose funding this primarily from the Insurance Benefits Expendable Trust, which had a balance as of October 31st of $132,143. So that almost covers the one-third. It will be about $7,000 short, which we will cover from the general fund. And then we propose that the remaining balance, we hold off as long as we can and we'll just make sure we pay it before the end of the school year. So that remaining balance of $278,641 will be paid through, using anticipated funds from the unassigned fund, fund balance at the end of the year. And we expect to have some flexibility because we have transferred some salaries over to the SAS grant. And then lastly, to try to mitigate the impact on the tax rate from that reduction in the fund balance, is we would recommend lowering the retained fund balance for this year down to the minimum 2.5% of the net assessment. So that's about $615,000. That would be a reduction from what we put in this year of $856,843. That would be a decrease of $241,308, which would cover almost 87% of that remaining balance. And then the remainder, we would have to fund to the, the unassigned fund balance. So to use those funds in the trust fund, we of course need your approval as the spending agent, but that, that is our proposed plan for the assessment.
So what it would mean is, we would want to have, at one of our December board meetings, have a public hearing on expending the, the trust fund, so that we could then use it to pay out the payment prior to December 31.
So this is one of the nuts, but I guess can we approve this in such a, you know, the, the balance in the trust fund will accrue some interest between now and even November? So we just, whatever that comes in to be, we just reduce to 71, 76, 93 by that amount of help to call it a friendly amendment if you like, but...
The other thing we could consider doing, and you can correct me if I'm misstating something, because Teresa and I were talking about this, we could... something, because Teresa and I were talking about this, we, we could conceivably pay the third out of the current general fund, knowing that later on, we would tap. So, we could conceivably do that if we wanted to. It does take away some of our flexibility this year in the short term, but that was, that was another possibility. So, if, if earning the interest in the trust fund is, is concerning to people, we can certainly delay tapping it until later. Am I right about that?
Yeah, we do also earn interest on our bank balance as well. I don't know the exact rate, but it's not like we're not.
Probably not four percent.
Yeah, it's not as high as, as you get in the customer. So, anyway, so, so, yeah, to your point, Dan, approving it would be, if you're approving this, then we can talk about whether to put, have a public hearing at the next meeting and discuss in more detail then.
I guess that's the question, the, this approach, as opposed to hanging on to the trust fund balance and going the other way, is this primarily a matter of comfort, or is there some actual, like, risk to going the other way?
You mean, in terms of paying the, the third out of the general fund? I mean, it, yeah, I think it's more a matter of not knowing what we don't know, and, and to drain reserve funds in our current operating year. It does give us a little trepidation, but not a huge amount. I think we're, we feel pretty good about our current funds, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, there's, there's just, there's a lot we don't know that's, that's coming down the road, and we know we do want to tap the trust fund ultimately, if we do. So, it's just a question of, do we do it now or do it later?
Yeah. Not entirely following the logic, but I feel like I would be inclined to do the trust fund now, because we know we have that expense for medical coverage, or the, the assessment that we have to use. And if we keep the money in the general fund, we have more flexibility of where it gets used, should whatever happen.
Yeah.
I don't see a good rationale to get away.
Insurance provisions are not going to be suddenly narrowed, but it needs a whole lot. So, that, I, I agree, I'm just trying to make sure I fully understand what the thought process is.
I mean, I think really the fundamental question is, in order to capitalize on their new, their new plan, we have to pay a third before December thirty-one. And so, that's really the most important. Is that what we want to do?
Oh, I think that.
So, we can secure that.
Oh, sure, that part, yeah.
And then, whether it comes from the trust fund, we, that, that could be a later decision if we want to see how it goes, but we need to determine, are we going to make this payment? So, basically, what would have to happen is Bryant would need to work with School Care to figure out what our plan was going to be, is confirm it, and then go forward with it.
Is the fee for not paying the store, it's a half percent, so. It's a half percent on four hundred thousand versus potentially four percent on one hundred fifty thousand. We probably shouldn't get into that kind of issue, but I mean, I don't think I'd be concerned either way, but I would rather just probably pay it and have it in the bill.
I mean, the only concern that I have in, in all of this is actually a much bigger picture thing, that I don't know if we really know how to quantify. We, we go into this with this plan, we pay our third, but if the whole rest of the state says, you know what, I'm going to hold on to my money, pay the half a percent, and see what happens, at what point does School Care find themselves with fewer options? And how might that impact us?
So, during the, the meeting, Teresa had gone to the public, School Care meeting, and apparently, I guess, well, apparently, they're.
They got the bridge loan. They got the bridge loan.
Oh, they got the bridge loan.
They have.
So, we don't need to worry about that.
And I think they, they said something like twenty-two percent of the.
Oh, that's right.
Entities had already paid.
Okay.
It is a fair concern. I, I mean, that's what worries me the most, is non-pen, but.
And I think that's more a risk of the twenty-six, twenty-seven year than it is twenty-five, twenty-six, because I think they've already secured the loan to get them through right now. The question is their viability down the road. So, if we're, we're thinking about that, that's more of a, a future issue than a, than a current issue, although I've been wrong before, and I could be wrong again.
Hypothetically, if there's less people, if there's less, we, we ask, but you're absolutely right. We don't know. The only thing I maybe I could not vote on tonight is the unassigned fund balance and the retained fund balance percentage. I think I need to understand that a little better. I know we've been really cautious about trying to increase that amount, but I just think I probably need to understand the, the transfers that occur with that on an annual basis a little bit better than I do before voting on it.
Well, I don't think you need, that, that is not a decision that has to be made tonight.
Yeah.
That's a decision that, at the end of the year, in June, you will, you will reconcile, and you will determine based on what the fund balance is.
Yeah.
What's currently in the retained fund balance, what our liabilities are left at that point for the assessment, and then you will decide as a board, okay? And it could be, I mean, we, the, the number, two point five for the retained fund balance, that's just the minimum you can have to keep a retained fund balance. So, that's why we, we use that number. But it's entirely possible, when we get to that point, we're in a better financial position, and you make a different decision. So, that, you don't have to commit to that. I think really what we would be looking for would be clarity, do you want us to move forward with this, pay the third before the end of the year to avoid any interest charges? It's not a deal breaker by any means, but twelve thousand dollars isn't, isn't nothing. And so, if we can, if we, that, that really would be the guidance we'd be looking for tonight, and then we could still make the decision if we want to tap the trust fund immediately, or pay it out of.
Me personally, I feel comfortable saying that I would have to pay the third now, you know, but to tap the trust fund would be my decision, but, but one of five.
Where else would you get the money from, if you tell me the unassigned fund balance? About two hundred and seventy-eight thousand?
What we, what we don't know until we get to the end of the year is what our other expenses might be. Typically, when we get to the end of a fiscal year, we have somewhere between, you know, eight, nine hundred thousand before we, and this is another discussion we have to have tonight about warrant articles, and which trust funds you want to fund at the end. But there, there is the possibility that there will be funds available at the end that wouldn't require the draining of the, of the retained fund balance down to two and a half. But again, I, we can't, it's too early to try to project where we're going to be. You know, if you use last year as a predictor, we had about nine hundred thousand dollars when it came time to say, okay, nine hundred thousand, in addition to what was in the retained fund balance from the previous year, when we had, we had to say, okay, two hundred thousand going into the capital reserve fund for the facilities, sixty-five went into the special ed trust fund, that lowered it down to six hundred and thirty-five or something, and then there were a couple of expenses we decided at the end to pay because the money was there. And that could happen again, and it's going to come down to the board's comfort level in terms of what's the. I, I keep going to the place of, what's the number of dollars you want to return to offset taxes? And from my perspective, being consistent with that year over year is important. So, if one year you give nothing back, and the next year, it, it, it does manipulate the tax rate in a way that can be challenging.
Kathy, are you comfortable with this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I think we can make the motion generically enough that we can cover unrealized gains.
So, I, I, regretfully, I, I want to pull back the draft budget proposal that is in front of you tonight. Bryant and I discovered, unfortunately, late today, that we had some discrepancies in the, the accounting of our revenues, and we, we initially thought, well, maybe we can make adjustments here and, and, and put it in front of you, and still be able to decide tonight. Unfortunately, I don't feel that it's, it's more complicated, and so, we need time to, to figure it out. So, what I'd like to recommend is that we pull back on discussing the draft budget tonight, and I'm sorry to do this to you, but could we schedule a, an additional board meeting either Monday or Tuesday night of next week, to be able to, just to address the budget, so we can make the adjustments we need to make and bring it back to you?
Comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I think, I think we probably wouldn't be, I think we probably wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't ask, so, there are some discrepancies, I get that, and you guys are on top of it. I'm not overly concerned with it, because I know you both, and I trust you, but I'm sure you'd probably would like to hear.
I hear you.
These are just minor sort of typos and vessels here and there.
So, basically, what happened was, the revenues, the issue is in revenues, and how you account for the revenues in the budget. The, the number of dollars that we have presented to you, from an appropriation standpoint, that's, that's the number we need to, that we believe we need to run the district. The issue is with the, we, we've been talking about four point four one being the number. Based on how we've accounted for the revenues, we feel that we were, we were wrong about that. And so, what we need to do is go back, reanalyze it, and make sure we are giving you actual real numbers. So, basically, there are about four hundred thousand in federal revenues that we don't feel we've accounted for at this point, and we just need to go back to the drawing board and make sure that we have accounted for them appropriately, so that when we bring you a number, you can know a hundred percent that's the right number.
Great, thank you for that explanation.
And it, does that, did I answer that accurately?
Someone's going to be the bad guy. I feel like you're going to get a knee here.
I think we, I need to acknowledge that we were, we made a mistake in terms of comparing what our proposed budget was with a baseline. The baseline we were comparing it to was basically what was in our system, but what alerted me to the discrepancy is, I went back and looked at the actual warrant from last year, and those numbers are in there. So, there's, there's a discrepancy there, and the number that we had previously proposed for you is higher than what was on the warrant, so the percentage increase will be affected. And it's, it's not as low as it initially appeared, so, that was my fault.
I appreciate you being forthright in the fact that you did your diligence, figured back and checked last year's numbers, speaking to you, so.
So, hopefully, we can, I think we'll need to find some places where we'll need to reduce our proposed budget to get it down to a reasonable increase amount that you would be happy with, but that's what we need to do.
So, yeah, we need to, we need to go back and relook at things. There are a number of places. In fact, before we discovered the, the issue, we were ready, we were excited to report to you that our adequacy aid was higher than we projected, so we were very excited that we got more, more. And, and so, there are a number of things that worked in our favor, but this clearly is not one. And before we start promising anything to anybody, we want to make sure we fully handle it. And so, what will happen is, I will be bringing my leadership team together, and we will have some conversation. And so, on Monday or Tuesday night, whichever works for you, we will present to you what adjustments that we have made to get us to the place we feel is appropriate, because we definitely, we have heard, and we want to meet that budget target in the four percent range.
Which is great, and I applaud you for trying to do that. I think, and the board, please correct me, but our, our goal is to try to meet that, but also try to maintain the level of services we're providing now. So, I don't want to make more work for you, but if you decide if to get that, we need to lose expositions, or we need to, you know, get rid of UA or something, you know, we'd want to know that and be able to make decisions, because I don't think that four point one percent, or the four percent we set for goals necessarily do, you know, our bottom line concern. It's more the overall effect of the.
I appreciate that. So, we will, we will take a look at it, and again, it's, it initially appeared relatively straightforward, but then, as you start to, you realize that it's like pulling a string, and there's other impacts. So, we're going to figure it out, and I have complete faith that, between Bryant and I, and the rest of the leadership team, we'll figure it out. But thank you for your understanding. So, I guess I would ask, do you want to pick what night you want to have? Because obviously, there should have to be a posted meeting.
Well, if, if you've got to meet with your leadership team, how long is that going to take, then?
I'm going to, I'm going to be called on tomorrow.
Yeah.
We're going to, we're going to get together tomorrow to get this process started.
So, given it's a holiday, is Monday the best?
I prefer Monday with today.
We'll, we'll be ready for Monday night?
Same time, five fifteen?
If that works for you.
I might need it a little later on Monday.
That's fine.
If, if we do a prior commitment, if we could do like even five forty-five.
Five forty-five? Yep.
And again, this would be a one agenda item meeting, it would be for us to, what's your, what? One little thing, one little thing.
I do want to echo just what Gary said in terms of transparency, and, and on multiple occasions, just out in the community, or in other communities that have, people have run into administration. I'm just constantly hearing about how nice it must be to have administrators in our district who are so transparent, and being really, really, really real, and walk the talk, not just talk it, so.
I have to second that. Todd, one, as I was going through the budget today, I noticed, and this was something I was going to bring up, but the professional development line, you know, that thing would increase quite a bit, so I didn't know if that would be in place for, I don't know if it increased for a reason, or if it's.
Right, well, it, it, yeah, definitely increased for a reason, but it would be one of the areas we take a look at. One of the things that we have experienced is, a lot of our professional development money has historically come from grant funding, and that grant funding has been less and less available to us, so it's forced us to, to more build it into the operating, but yeah. So, there's been more of that, so that, but yeah, we will, we absolutely will take a look at everything, and try to figure out what we can do to, to adjust.
And since, I just had a couple editorial issues to bring up, but we don't need to bring that in.
We can discuss it all Monday. If we're going to make some adjustments, let's discuss it Monday night?
You know, the comments.
Five forty-five Monday night?
Yeah.
And can I, I'll get back to you with a location, just because I don't know what space will be available. We might need to meet in the, at the town hall, I don't know, it depends on what's going on today, okay? Thank you.
You've been on to draft warrant.
I wouldn't recommend, if we can, we need to just for consistency, to be public, but I understand, because there is something else.
I just don't, I, I can't speak to what's going on yet, but I will do everything I can to keep us in this building. The draft warrant?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, really, the draft warrant, I was just trying to put this in front of you to get you to think. Bryant had already started talking with legal counsel about, like, what might, what might our warrant look like, and there are a couple of issues that would be helpful for us to begin talking about. We do not need to make any decisions tonight about it, but just to kind of throw it at you. Right now, the warrant looks like there's going to be elections of officers, so there will be a moderator, electing a moderator, clerk, a treasurer, and one school board member. Obviously, the proposed budget, when we finalize that, will be there in this traditional language for that. There will be a, one article about the para contract, once we determine what that is, and that, and language for that. There will likely also be an additional article that basically says, if this gets voted down, can we reopen negotiations for, for salary items only? And then, we have to decide, really, the way that the conversation is, is the remaining warrant articles, and it's more of a strategy conversation. I mean, clearly, with the health, you know, benefits or assessment issue, if we deplete our health benefits fund, as well as bring our retained fund balance down to its minimum, replenishing those becomes something we want to talk about. So, clearly, I'm assuming there will be some form of, of an item on the insurance and benefits, but the conversation is, should that be an appropriation or out of the, out of the fund balance? We obviously want to keep going on our C I P plan, and funding that, we might want to have some conversation about that. And again, is that, like we've done it before, out of, out of the fund balance, or do we want to actually have it be an appropriations article, so it's not? Or do we want to actually have it be an appropriations article so it's not coming out of the fund balance? I did want to just update you, the special ed trust fund, we've historically had an article about that, but we've, last year's contribution brought us up to 425, which last year was the goal. And the idea was that it would cover a low, middle and a high place when it needed. So we might be able to say, let's not fund that one this year. And then the technology trust fund, I know Jason shared with you guys kind of a five-year look at the budget workshop. And so the question is, you know, we had a plan to spend that down and we are working it through, but it might be worth the conversation about is that, do we want to do that knowing that there's like a five-year worth of technology items? Obviously, that can always be put in the operating budget, but just that's a conversation. And then obviously, this has come up two years in a row. Do we want to officially put a warrant to change the term of the moderator and the clerk? One of the things that's come up every year, Chris and Terry go, you know, it would be so much easier if we were two-year terms and it was at the same time as the town, so I didn't have to always remember. So getting us in, so changing to a two-year term would get us in sync with the parents. So anyway, those are the issues. So tonight, I was looking to just have some conversation about it to give guidance to us as to what it is you want us to start putting together, because we really should be ready to tell people what the warrant is at the public hearing, which is generally true.
So I, I'm starting the last item. I, I know you've been told that the clerk is a two-year, a three, one, oh my gosh, with the town, is a two-year position. I've talked to the clerk directly and I think I've confirmed it, and I'm positive it's a three-year term, like 99.9%.
Okay.
That is three-year term. So you may just want to double check on that.
Okay, alright.
But to get them in sync would, would take a couple, because of when the next elections are for that position, it would take some chuffing, but I think it's a three-year.
Oh.
We don't necessarily have to go to three, we can go to two-year just to give the clerk.
I just know we're gonna lose our moderator if we don't make.
I know, absolutely. He's been asking for 10 years, so I think the fact that we're even having this conversation is probably.
So yes, I will absolutely take a look. I, I thought that was correct, but I, you're probably, and if you're 99, you're 99, I'm like 60%ish, you know?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Whatever the correct answer is, I'm absolutely, whatever we can do to make Chris and Terry's lives easier.
I'm assuming, and we could ask counsel about this, we might be able to craft the language of that warrant to be whatever, just for the year to start it to be in line, so that, so it's not a guessing game, it's like.
Yeah, exactly. Or we could make them both 20-year and then make our lives easier.
So why wouldn't you want to, if it's three years, why wouldn't you do three years?
Well, I think it would be ideal to do three years so it matches the town, so if the same person's willing to do the position. It's just that we'd have to wait, I think, next year if I recall, to do three years to get it on the warrant so that the following year, it would start the three-year interval, I think, if I recall correctly.
Because you're always one year off. So if you want to change it, you're changing it for the following year. So if you put it up in '26, you're changing it in '27.
Changing for the next year.
But that was at the last deliberative session that did the speculation, so that was a while ago.
So okay, so if we can figure out exactly what we need to do, it sounds like there's support from doing that. Okay, then the other conversation is around just thoughts on strategy for the warrant articles in terms of funding them. Do we stick with the fund balance sort of approach? Or do we want to consider having an appropriation or raise an appropriate so it's not coming out of the year in fund balance?
I'm going backwards and taking, keeping Gary's.
So you go the easy ones first, right?
I would want to relook at the plan that Jason wrote us at the budget workshop first, just to see, because I do recognize that we're trying to spend that down, but also that we had.
Yeah, I agree.
Technology's not gonna get any cheaper and technology's not gonna grow.
Make it smaller.
Slower, yeah. And then I would be hesitant to hold off completely on adding anything to the special education trust fund, just because we potentially could get more students than we would anticipate in a regular political climate of town enrollment. And so I would just worry that, you know, that accounts for a low, medium and high, but what if we have a year, we have too high, you know, medium?
I agree with you, and I think that's part of the discussion, but I think part of it also is the order determines whether or not things get funded. So the first one, if we say, from year in fund balance and we have $200,000 left and the first one's $200,000, that means the second one's just nothing. And if we say year in fund balance and we have year in fund balance, automatically it's funded, whereas if we say, we want to raise it through taxation, the voters may or may not approve it, so that's the other discussion maybe to talk about. But I don't disagree with you about special ed trust fund. I, my big concern right now is, is gonna be the healthcare trust fund because we're missing completing it. And I 100% agree on the capital, these are fun, school improvement, excuse me. But maybe that's when we do less. Doesn't make sense, you know, we haven't, we've been lucky with the special ed so far, so does it make sense to do less of the school improvement, make sure we do the health first, you know, of those? Kind of what I'm wondering.
That's true.
About him, isn't it?
And there's two, there's two funds that add up to a million.
Yeah, the two together, it might be a little bit over.
And based on current funding, if I recall, top of my discussions, I don't say we're ahead, but we're, we're looking very, very comfortable on our 20-year plan, so that's something we could probably float a little bit and feel comfortable. So bitten in that good taxpayer, is it saying no? Oh, there will be a fund down.
Sure, 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 sure.
Yeah, and it's more and more likely if we budget more tightly every year, so yeah, 100%. Right, yeah. Yeah, it's a great point, Dan, I'm considering that.
So are you, are you saying put it on the warrant?
Put it.
Okay, I see, I see. Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I think it's also, that's a good point to say that our goal is 425,000 and we met that. Should we have a new goal going forward? Yeah, I think you probably should. Doesn't it make sense to do that this year or should we kind of be at our word that that was our goal in a year? Throw a shoe at us, but yeah.
I think if you, I mean, clearly, there, there is a risk of out-of-district placement cost. They really exist and at any point, you can have frankly, 425, if you take a high-end placement and then on top of that, since you have to transport somebody to Massachusetts daily, you could spend $100,000 adjusting transporting a kid to and from a placement.
Don't get me wrong, I don't think it's nearly enough and I don't think I ever have, but, you know, have we, have we set a goal and reached it? And do we have more pressing needs that we need to think about?
Yeah, I think within the last two years, we have increased the out-of-district placement tuition line so that it is, it's, it's, it's higher. And so I think we feel better about what's in the local budget and now we have this. So I do think in terms of hedging our bets, since we've never had need to tap the special ed funds, knock, 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 maybe this is the year to say, okay, let's, let's not do that, that one and roll the dice and see how it goes. Again, just like with insurance, you get a, you get a cost you can't predict for, you figure it out. But I, you know, of all the things I'm worried about right now, which there are many, I would say, this seems to be one that we have got a pretty good handle on right now, anyway.
Not to, I keep going back to the opening moment?
Oh gosh.
In a way.
Another thing I do, remember to worry back there.
Like I said, I did, I was gonna say, I don't want to put anything else out there, but we don't know how that's gonna look like just.
True.
What we have done so far is we have a dollar in a line.
Okay, I was gonna ask.
So we have a dollar. And I, and I did poll fellow superintendents as to what they were doing, everybody say, yeah, we're doing a dollar. The law says you have to have a budget line, doesn't say what you have to put in it. So one of the things that you, until you have data to go on, you don't know what's the amount that's right. Because what if we get more kids coming to us than leaving us? I mean, we actually could come ahead, you know?
Well, that's the other part of it.
So you just don't know.
Yeah, and this is a very broad assumption to make, but I would think that someone who has a childhood that has a district placement, doesn't have a lot of incentive to change the school, never buys it out of district placement, right? Maybe my rationale's completely wrong.
Say that again?
If I'm a parent, if I'm a parent and I have an out-of-district placement mentor in Dover, transferring my child to Newmarket to send them to the same out-of-district placement, doesn't make a ton of sense.
Right.
But maybe. But that, again, is a very broad assumption that we'll probably.
I mean, that's a big unknown.
A hundred percent, yeah.
But still, it's something you can't not think about at some point.
The, the other one that I'm now thinking about through the same lens is the technology trust fund. I, I don't disagree for a moment, it's an important thing to be thinking about, but we're very late in the budget process and we haven't thought about it other than.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
Right now. So it might be premature, maybe give Jason a year to, when you think about the amount of legwork that Jana and Dave put into the capital plan, to the buildings, that, that can happen in a week.
And I think Jason's done some of that work, but I think you're right, like, let's talk about it earlier, once you run for reelection.
Sorry, my voice doesn't work.
Yeah, there's only one more opening.
Yeah, right. There she went.
Correct.
So what, I guess, what will we, I feel like most of us agree that there are all this with the healthcare trust fund is probably, in terms of debt, that's, excuse me, it's probably a priority, what, do we want to try to fund it back to its prior amount? And what would people feel?
I hope it's a prior amount. All in one shot, probably not.
Well, I mean, I should say it's only, but it would be 125,000 would get it pretty close. And we've done 200,000 or 100,000 on the school repair each year, I think, I recall.
Yeah, we did, done, we did 260, 200 in the school repair and maintenance and 65 for special ed last year. And the year before that, we did 200 for capital improvement, about, I think it was 50 for special ed. And then we did, what else? You're looking at me like, I don't know what you're talking about. I was.
I think yours.
But there was some, they were similar.
So we've typically done 250 to 300 every year, going from the fund balance into trust fund.
Which one, the insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think 125 or 150 lyrical is probably low in hindsight.
I did want, you know, when we created that insurance fund, we actually weren't really thinking about getting whacked with a big assessment. We were actually more thinking about the fluidity of, you could have a person who's an employee that's, you know, a single person, that something changes that causes them to have a family plan very quickly. And the cost that you can't, there's no time to predict it and to be able to absorb those kind of changes. That was really where we, where we, that we initially thought that was the place to go, because you, in any given year, if you have a bunch of people, you hire a bunch of people and they all need family plans and you, the people they replaced are all single, the cost, it goes like, so that was why we initially created that. So, you know, 125 or so would be enough to cover that kind of a cost. But to have another half million sitting around for a potential future assessment, that's a whole other.
Yeah, do you think that will be another assessment?
They, I mean, you, you were at the meeting or you listened, what are they saying about the possibility of a future assessment?
Well, they're collecting $30 million, so in theory, that should get them back to the level of reserves that they need. And unless there's another year of just totally off-the-charts health claims, they should be on stable ground moving forward.
We don't know, but.
But ask him last year if he thought we were gonna get an assessment this year.
Yeah.
Right?
All of a sudden.
So let me, I think there's a couple ways I can propose this. Let me propose that we consider 200,000 as our amount of money we want to fund. And if so, I would be inclined, I've got Dave not here, this is something to work on this, I would be inclined to maybe put like 125 in the insurance fund and 75 towards the school improvement fund. And I don't like the term roll the dice, but, and not fund special ed or the technology trust fund.
Yeah, I think, I, I could definitely be on the one thing that I would do.
Would you put it to a warrant or just?
Ah, I was so confident until Dan said that, now I don't know. I'm gonna welcome to wiser people. I don't know, what would you do?
Well, I'm just thinking as a.
That's a great question, what would you do? That's a great question, what would you do?
What would you do? I'm just thinking as a voter, in this day and age.
Yeah.
I mean, there's another kind of piece of the puzzle here that we don't know yet, which is, you know, and his team are going to go back and do their best to, you know, to get back to a four-point something. But they may come to us on Monday night and we may look at the steps that we're taking to get there, and we may not like them at all. Yet we may say, you know what, we'll live with five, and this is what it takes to get to 4-4. And in that case, it's going to change the whole tenor of every conversation. So I don't, I feel a little uncomfortable making this decision without understanding that one.
And we don't have to decide tonight, I just wanted to begin the strategy conversation, as I know we had kind of kicked around the idea of do we, you know, raise it through taxation, or do we pay it out of the fund balance, and to begin thinking that way, because we don't have that much time left. We've got to have a draft, really, and get it agreed by council, like I said, by the public hearing. That's kind of typically what we.
Yeah, I mean, I think safely, I feel like we could say we took two things off the list tonight.
Yeah.
And I think, I know that the parent contract comes before that, careful importance, but I feel like that is something that, you know, you can't risk with taxing, raising funds through taxation with multiple other things. You wouldn't want somebody to be like, okay, now I need to pick and choose which one.
Good point.
No. Next up, the current board docs platform is migrating to Doegum.
There's really not much to say about it, just, it's beyond our control, it's, mergers happen in the technology world, and so they are switching. There's some documents in the executive section under.
Yeah, I saw that.
Under the meeting call to order. I kind of showed board members how to log in, but basically the, by the December 18 meeting will be on the new platform. But it's, as from a user perspective, it's not that different.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've got Thanksgiving coming up, that's a nice period, and then there's holiday craft fair, we talked about earlier, December 6, and there's a P-Team Living on December 9, and actually Sawyer mentioned winter sports getting started up right away for the P-Team.
Everybody remember to take your turkey out of the freezer and put it in the fridge this weekend.
Oh, so just thinking of school events, will the change half-day, early release day, will that feel like a?
I will, yes, I will be, yep, I'll push it out on Infinite Campus, it'll be on our website, and next meeting we'll put it in as an event, how about that?
Perfect. Want to acknowledge and express the donation.
That's amazing.
We have an incredibly generous donation to approve from Hannaford Helps Schools Program, turning the amount of $2,587. I had no idea.
And this is one of those programs Hannaford does, that when you go to the store, you can choose where you want the money to go to.
Oh, wow.
Oh, I guess they're doing that.
There's lots of, lots of marketing people, we shop at the Hannaford, but anyways, it's a very nice program.
Because this makes a record year in support of education through that program.
Well, they work for the summer day.
Because it is over $1,000, I would take motion to approve the donation.
Use your efforts for action on the school.
Yeah, that's right.
C I N, you say.
And then we also have the donation from M T E P to the Junior National Honor Society.
And another one to N E S for the Artist from Residence Program. And just a reminder, last year they had that one with the mural that's on the wall outside the CAF, another similar type old school project. I don't know what it is yet, but it's going to be.
I don't know, it's about $1,000, so we do have to accept it.
Now I'm actually.
I moved in motion to approve the November, November minutes?
Second.
Second.
Kathy, Kathy. And is that Gary?
Either, I don't know.
Gary, Dan.
Who has manifested by Kathy?
Oh, I don't know how to do that, I'm going to, I'll listen to him.
I move we approve the manifest for November 20, 2025, owing $1,268,48.74.
Second.
Motion by Gary, second by Dan.
I have cues on how to do that.
I would also seek a motion to.
Do we need to vote?
Oh, okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's getting late.
Did we vote on the minutes, though?
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Oh, I don't know if we did enough.
That's why I got.
Move second, yeah, you're right.
All those in favor of approving the November 6, 2025 board reading minute?
Aye.
Aye.
You did hit her in mind the stuff we didn't vote on.
Oh, yeah. All right. Did we just approve the manifesto? Yeah. I seek a motion to approve the recommendation from the Health Benefits Committee.
So moved.
I'll second it.
I think that's going to be a reason favor.
Aye.
And then I'll take a motion to approve the health insurance assessment payment plan for paying one-third before the end of the year.
Yeah, so I move we pay $132,143.59 prior to the December 31, 2025 deadline to the assessment for school trust, as well as any interest earned between now and this time we pay, make the payment.
We have to pay $100.
Oh, you're, you're right, so.
$100, that's what's in the trust fund, we have to need about $7,000.
Oh, yeah, you're right. So in any additional, any additional interest that's accrued up until that time, would the remainder be paid by the general fund?
There we go. I second that, too.
Was it by?
Uh-oh, wait a minute.
I have a question. I don't know if anyone has answered it, is if we deplete their full fund balance?
I think we need to keep a dollar. I'm assuming.
Yeah, I don't know. I can find out.
We'll keep a dollar.
Yeah.
What's the interest? I didn't think there was an interest change.
Point five percent monthly interest if we don't pay by December 31, or by January 1.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's the interest Kathy's asking about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the extra accrued interest from the balance that was in the packet is on October 31, by November 30, thirty something else.
All right, oh, okay, now I got it.
But, yeah, I agree, we got to keep $1 in there so we don't have to shutter the fund.
Do you want to re-read that minus $1?
I'd like to amend my motion to minus that by $1 and retain that in the.
Thank you.
Or for Ellen, who's going to have to.
I know, I was going to say, Ellen's going to have to figure this one out.
Second.
I think we already did the second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, cross off. Proposal, and what we did not get done last week, we, I would take a motion to use funds from the impact fee.
Should we tape that?
To be used for the electrical upgrade project that Dave Riley presented to us.
So moved.
So, motion by Gary, second by Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I would take a motion to approve the Hannaford donation of $2,587 for Newmarket Elementary School. Do I do them separately?
You can do them.
And the $1,000 donation for the Junior National Honor Society.
So moved. Second.
Second by Dan, second by Gary. All those in favor?
Aye.
And, we don't believe we have a need for a non-public, so I would seek a motion to adjourn my first bill in regular school board meeting.
Yeah, we could.
At.
Well done, so moved.
And I will second it, heartily. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent job.